Good evening, Council. I'm Reverend Kevin Olson and thank you again for allowing me to speak on behalf of Faith Leaders in Action, Pueblo's Energy Future, and several others. I want to lift up the work that Councilman Larry Antenzio has done with Pueblo's Energy Future regarding brokering three face-to-face meetings with Black Hills Energy Management during the last quarter of 2016. However, after just three meetings, it became evident to us that any attempt to influence or change rates and fees and tariffs, policies, and practices requiring a reduction in Black Hills revenue was going to be a challenge. They made it clear to us that whatever change we suggested had to be revenue-neutral for them. It's the classic guacamo game. If you lower something here, you have to raise it over there, thus revenue-neutral. Unfortunately, after just three meetings, all conversations ended. But with Mr. Burke and Mr. Jones here tonight, if they would just give us what we want, I could retire. But the reality is the self-interest of Black Hills versus the self-interest of most Pueblo citizens, the business community and the faith community, and I think I can now safely say the city itself, because of the newly-proposed Streetlight Rate Scheme, is no longer compatible with our collective values, our standard of ethics, our morals, and/or our social justice ideals. Case in point, need I remind you that El Centro Los Provos, the nonprofit organization that Sister Nancy Crafton directs, has spent $485,000 on past due Black Hills electric bill since 2008, the year Black Hills took over from Aquila. I believe this is four times, if I remember from the August hearing when the PUC was here, is four times the amount she spent over a comparable time period with the previous utility provider. This is unacceptable, and we should be outraged by this report. It's unacceptable to shut off 7,000 low-income households a year. It's unacceptable to have a 10-kilowatt threshold demand-charge trigger for business-class customers, which by the way also includes churches. It's unacceptable to gouge and penalize the solar owners and installers with their Phase II rate proposal. All of these and many more practices and policies are unacceptable and unjust. They are morally, ethically, and socially bad for the commonwealth of Pueblo. We can do better than this. We must do better than this, and the time to do something is now. We see no change in the Black Hills Energy pattern of doing business. In fact, we believe they will continue to raise rates, fees, and tariffs each chance they get. Up to now, nothing in their history indicates anything otherwise. In closing, I know there is some concern on the City Council about the cost of exiting the franchise agreement early, but I believe there is a, potentially, a greater cost to do nothing. Just the proposed Streetlight Program alone will cost the city millions of dollars between now and 2030, and that's assuming no more increases in rates, fees, and tariffs, which is highly unrealistic. The economic and social impact on our community over the next 12 years could be staggering, and that's why we can't wait to act. That's why I am not retired. Therefore, on behalf of the faith community, Pueblo's Energy Future, our faithful and generous social service agencies that go beyond, go beyond what's called for, and thousands of low-income citizens and countless others, I urge you, and I beg you, to announce your intentions to take the 2020 off-ramp in the next 30 days. Following that action, I can assure you plenty of stakeholders will step forward and partners to help you do a thorough study of all the options, and then, if feasible, choose an energy strategy.
Reverend Olson, that concludes your five minutes. I'm sorry to cut you off, but that's how it works, so.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, appreciate it. All right, Council, that concludes the public forum, and now we'll move on to Councilmember commentary, and I would ask Councilman Antenzio, would you please start?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. President. When I came on council a couple of years ago, I was tasked with the duty of being the liaison between Pueblo's Energy Future, the faith community, and Black Hills Energy and City Council. I tried to walk a fine line in that I weighed the interests of all parties involved. I came to the conclusion, though, recently, that Pueblo's Energy Future are our constituents. They are Pueblo. Black Hills is a partner in the business of electricity with us. Those are two completely opposite ends of the spectrum, as far as I'm concerned. All the things that Black Hills has done over the last couple of years, raising rates and everything that they've done, is unconscionable. I've tried to work towards some equity justice for our low-income people. We met with Black Hills a few times, and we got one concession. They lowered the disconnect rate from $50 down to 15. Yeah, maybe it helped a few people. But somebody from Pueblo's Energy Future wrote a op-ed in the newspaper. Black Hills didn't like it, so they cut off all communication between Pueblo's Energy Future, Black Hills, myself, and City Council, as far as I'm concerned, because I was the liaison between the three. In that, and then after that, the slap in the face came when they decided to charge us double the amount of money that we're going to be paying for those electric lights. To get into, my thinking is getting into an agreement with somebody, and then that opposite partner coming back a few months later and saying, "Oh, by the way, I forgot. I'm going to have to charge you twice as much now," is unconscionable. I'm sorry, but that is going to take money out of poor people on my side of town, on the west side, Bob Schilling's side of town, Bessemer, Aguilera's side of town. That's going to take money out of their pockets, because that million dollars extra that we're going to have to pay for that electricity for the lights is going to come out of their pockets. Therefore, our ability to help them with their situations. I don't see anything changing in terms of Black Hills. So what I would like to ask is that, or what we would like to ask, Councilman Nickel and myself would like to sponsor a resolution declaring the city of Pueblo's intent to terminate its franchise agreement with Black Hills Energy at the midpoint of the contract in 2020. If due diligence identifies a more advantageous organizational structure for the city's electric utility, and also studying the feasibility of alternative mechanisms for the operation of the city's electric distribution system. Councilman. Councilman Nickel and myself would like to ask for the support of the rest of the City Council and ask city administration to bring forward that resolution, so we could vote on it at the nearest and most opportune time in the near future. That's all I have.
All right, Councilman Antenzio, I appreciate your comments, and, audience, citizens, our constituents, could you just kind of hang in there? We have a lot more people. I appreciate your enthusiasm. So now let's, Councilwoman Winner.
Gosh, I don't know how I follow that. Anyway, I would just like all of Council, and I guess everyone in Pueblo, encourage them to read a book. It's called Dreamland, and it's the true tell of America's opiate epidemic. It's an easy read, and it gives you a clear understanding of why our entire nation is where it is today with opiates. I guess that's all I have for now. Dreamland.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Schilling.
Thank you, Steve. I think for us to try and discover other utility options is a good idea. I'd like to see us, the city, get into solar business. There may be some realities. Folks, the dream of doing this may be much harder than some of you realize. We went through this about 15 years ago, and it's not saying it's impossible, but I'm saying the task of doing something like this and finding another utility is really going to be the job. And any of you that can help us find another one, that would be great, and I have no problem with putting this out, but there's some realities, and it's going to be a hell of a hard, heck of a hard job to get done, because I think when we tried to do this before, there was probably Black Hills, that was it. And we spent a lot of money on attorneys, so I got no problem moving forward and seeing if there's somebody else, another utility that can come in, and I'm sure there's going to be some amazing costs involved with that, so I'm all for looking around, but I'm also kind of a realist, and I think best we're 50/50, finance somebody else, but I'm not an electric expert. And other than that, I'm just humbled and honored, and I'm really glad to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Schilling, and also I want to tell you, I appreciate the fact that you're going to work with our constituents up in University Park and try to address that issue, because I think that's, no neighborhood should have to have their kids or any of the members of the community held hostage by people that aren't responsible taking care of their pets, so thank you for doing that. Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. In light of the flooding down in Texas and the Gulf Coast, the Council President Stephen Rockin and I got to meet with the Colorado National Guard, and they look to be prepared to, in case something like that were to happen here in southern Colorado, so that's a little comforting. And then I got to spend some time with Steve on his last year to ride in the state therapy float, so.
That was great, that's right, thank you.
So that was a good, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brown. All right, Councilman Aguilera.
Well, you know, I've been on council two terms, and I've wanted to be friends with Excel and get along with them to see if there was some common ground, and, Black Hills, I'm sorry. And we have a lot of poor people in Bessemer, you know, for Christmas, you know, we give 80 or 90 bicycles, we give cards to people who we hope will have a Merry Christmas and a dinner for Christmas and stuff like that. And generally, we have to go to Black Hills and ask them for some money, but you know, in my heart, I have a hard time accepting that money, because what happens if they give us a thousand bucks, you know who pays that thousand bucks? You guys do. So it's really hard to even ask them for anything, and when you ask Black Hills for something, it's always like they want to come back and penalize you. And we did this deal on the lights. We hadn't hardly, I think, even barely worked out the agreement to have these new lights, and they stick us with another thousand bucks for the loss of the lights, the money that they were going to receive from the lights. They come back and wanted to charge us an additional amount of money to pay for them. There's no win with them, and it really breaks my heart that, you know, even when you see them socially, the people from Black Hills, it's hard to even shake their hand, because you don't know what the other hand's doing, is trying to take money out of your wallet, and so it's really a saddening thing for this community to be in the boat that it's in. I don't know how much longer this is going to last, but even the businesses here in Pueblo are complaining mightily about the cost of energy that they are receiving from Black Hills. All of them, all of them have doubled or some even tripled, and so it's a sad deal, you guys, and I don't know if, how we're going to win this war, but I can tell you, we really need to win this war with Black Hills. Believe me, or we're not going to have much of a community, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Aguilera. Councilman Nickel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to thank that group from Victory Outreach. I think this opiate issue is going to take a whole village of folks working together with different perspectives, faith-based organizations, everybody that can pitch in and help people, and I just was happy to hear what they had to say tonight, so that was great. Mr. President, I wanted to just read my letter that I had, I want to read it into the record that I had sent the Council a few days ago, if you could just bear with me for a couple of minutes. "To my colleagues on the Pueblo City Council, I am writing to once again affirm my opposition to Black Hills Energy and recognize the clear sentiments stated by our constituents regarding the utility's ongoing unfair rate increases that have been inflicted upon citizens of our city. We are all equally aware that these continuous rate increases have negatively impacted the elderly and the poor, the most vulnerable of Pueblo's citizens. They are continually forced to choose between keeping their lights on and buying food and prescription drugs. Additionally, as you know, Pueblo businesses are under siege by rate increases, excessive demand fees, and have dramatically, those costs have dramatically increased the cost of doing business in our city. And now the next betrayal, Black Hill has deceived the city by reversing their support and seeking additional compensation for the city's LED street lamp project that was supposed to save taxpayer dollars. This is simply the last straw that breaks the camel's back. Enough is enough. It is high time that we consider the upcoming option to off-ramp the franchise agreement and turn out the lights on Black Hills Energy in Pueblo. I'm asking for your support of a resolution calling for the city to declare its intent to terminate the franchise agreement with Black Hills Energy as permitted within the agreement, as previously discussed at previous workstations, work sessions. If we are able to identify a better electric utility option that meets the needs of Pueblo's citizens, then we have the opportunity to pursue other avenues. We should also give notice that we plan to off-ramp and join other community stakeholders to combine our efforts to study every available option. I realize the challenges that face us and that this will be an uphill battle, and it will also take time for the benefits to be realized by our citizens, but nevertheless, I strongly feel, as I know many of you do, that it is our sworn duty to act decisively in the long-term interests of our citizens. We have an obligation to free them from this unfair financial burden, if possible. The future of Pueblo's economic prosperity is at stake, and the time is now for Pueblo City Council to rise and meet the challenge and fight for our city's future. Additionally, I'm seeking your support of a second resolution that will take every action necessary to designate Old Pueblo Steam Plant 5 and 6 as a locally-designated historic landmark. That we'll be discussing tonight. This historic structure represents an important part of Pueblo's past as one of the first cities in the West to generate electricity, to operate electric streetcars. The plant is historically significant to the state of Colorado and to our citizens as a landmark and should be protected from demolition. Black Hills Energy has fought to demolish this structure for several years, and it is my belief that their motives have more to do with large profits that will be derived from the demolition and ongoing environmental cleanup. I fear that Black Hills is already counting their guaranteed windfall that will be earned off the backs of Pueblo's hard-working citizens. This building should be saved and developed into a revenue-producing commercial center that will benefit the taxpayers of Pueblo. Pueblo ratepayers should be spared the potential huge cleanup and demolition costs that could skyrocket if additional environmental remediation is required. These costs will likely be passed on to Pueblo ratepayers with partial blessing of the Colorado PUC and would likely benefit Black Hills financially. Lastly, we should call upon our community to join us in the fight to take back our city, and this goes to what Councilman Aguilera was talking about tonight. We must unite in our stance against Black Hills leadership by turning away their obvious attempts to curry favor within our community by infiltrating local nonprofit boards and through their influence of offering donations. Their brand of community service comes at too great a price for Pueblo's citizens. Black Hills has published a list of local nonprofits they contribute to, and they use this to justify their rate increases during their filings. Pueblo's nonprofits and organizations should be asked to resist their support and avoid their involvement. If Black Hills executives are currently serving on local boards, they should be asked to step down. Black Hills leadership must receive a clear message that their money and their influence are no longer welcome in our community. It is my sincere hope that we unanimously adopt these strong actions and send a clear, unmistakable message to Black Hills Energy that they have worn out their welcome in Pueblo, Colorado. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I hope we can work together.
Councilman, of course, Councilman Aguilera.
I know everybody's all excited about energy, but I have one more issue. Last week, and I know you're not supposed to pick on the newspaper, because they'll come back and kill you, but last week, last week, last Tuesday, was the opening day of school, and what is the headline of the Pueblo Chieftain? District 60 Schools Failing. I mean, can't they say, "Hey, we have to work harder"? Can't they say that we need to do things differently in order to bring our education and support of our schools? But when I saw that, it freaked me out. The opening day of school, that they would put that on the front page of the newspaper about our schools failing, and I tell you, I'm really disappointed, and I hope Steve will let me go to the editorial board this week, so I could tell him that that's terrible for them to do that to our kids and our schools, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Oh, you have something else? All right, all right, let's, remember, we do have another meeting here.
I know, we do have another meeting.
All right, Councilwoman.
You know, I just don't know if we're taking the right direction when it comes to our rates and dealing with the PUC. The PUC is, they're the organization that certifies the company that will provide service, electrical service, to you. The franchise agreement is only an agreement that allows Black Hills Energy to make repairs anytime that it's needed. So in other words, if there's power lines down or something, they can go in and block off streets and take care of it without going to regional building and getting permits and all of that. So that 3% that's on your bill comes directly to the city, and the city uses that money for lots of other services. But again, the PUC is the one that certifies the utility company to provide electricity. So we're paying an attorney lots of money here to talk to the PUC that turns around and comes and sits and tells us, "Well, the PUC certifies them." So I don't really know how we approach this, because it seems to me that unless Black Hills Energy is for sale, the PUC is going to continue to certify this company to provide electricity. So I just don't know how we get past that.
Okay, Councilman Antenzio.
Real quick, last Thursday, I had a food giveaway at St. Leander's Parish. Karen Share and Kaiser Permanente helped me. Over 250 people showed up. We ran out of food. We're going to have another one in September. Hopefully, we'll have a lot more food, but that's one of the problems with Pueblo, is there's so much poverty that people have to stand in line to get food at a food giveaway. And by the way, if we condemn the infrastructure, the electric infrastructure, and we put out to bid to electric companies where we get our electricity from, maybe we'll get a lower rate by doing that, and I'm done.
All right, it's my turn. Well, first of all, I told Councilwoman Winner that I would apologize. The other day, I was interviewed in the newspaper, and we were talking about trash, not to change the subject, but I said, "Well, one of the things that we used to have was a volunteer coordinator that used to organize cleanups in the neighborhood and on the prairie." And I guess I didn't realize that we still had a part-time person doing that. Is that correct, Sam? And then tonight, we found out that they're going to become full-time. So I think it would be good in the future, since we've been talking about trash on a regular basis, somebody should have come forward and said that we had this person, because I didn't realize. I thought we eliminated all that back during the Great Recession and didn't know we had it, so I think that's great, and I think I believe that we should have a full-time person organizing that.
That position was gone for a couple of years, but it has been back for about three years now.
Where have I been? Yeah, okay.
We're having a cleanup.
Quit talking, okay, I'm not.
We're having a group cleanup Friday, if you want to join us.
Okay, well, that's good. Anyhow, I just, so are we good now that I apologized for, but I'm glad to hear it's full-time? Let's move on to, well, first of all, you know, I can talk about Black Hills. I mean, and I've talked about Black Hills in front of the PUC. I've given testimony. As a matter of fact, I do believe that, you know, we did have an attorney, Bill McCowen, was our utility attorney, and we made arrangements for him to come in front of us to give us an idea of what that would look like to do the off-ramp and to explore that. You know, so this is not a new topic about the off-ramp, and certainly people in the audience have been talking about it for a long time, and I agree with Councilman Schilling. It's not going to be a walk-through-the-park. I mean, we use Boulder as an example in terms of them dealing with Excel, and that's a much more affluent community, and they're taxing themselves to be able to pay millions and millions of dollars to be able to, now they're fighting with Excel. It's a hostile takeover, and undoubtedly, I doubt very much that Black Hills is going to lay down and let us just walk in and take over the utility. So I mean, these are all things that we've been told about, and we certainly understand that this is what we're facing, but I think we probably talked enough about this now. You know, I'm actually, quite frankly, very tired about talking about this topic, so now it's time to put ourselves out there. So if you bring a resolution forward, then I think that's the chance for us to put an end to this topic for now and then move forward to see what we're going to do. So I would urge you to bring that forward, and I don't know if we need a whole lot more discussion about it, so, but I think, you know, talk is, we've been talking for quite a while, we've been talking for a couple of years. But the one thing I do tell you, and I'll just tell you how I feel, that I think that to kill the messengers, I don't think is the right thing to do. And, you know, the people that work at Black Hills, you know, they're our friends, they're neighbors, they are family members, and, you know, they're just trying to make a living like everybody else in this community. They just happen to work for a corporation that we certainly don't agree with how they're doing their corporate business in our community. It's not that easy to find another job, and as a matter of fact, probably some of them worked for the former, the predecessor, and so I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair for us to tell people if they sincerely want to help nonprofits and be a part of that, and plus, if we're going to say that nonprofits don't accept any more money from Black Hills, then I think the city needs to step up, and we replace every one of those dollars, because this community is struggling. Councilman Aguilera, would you agree? So, you know, Black Hills, I don't know how much they give out, but if they give out 250, 300,000, 50,000, then I think we have a responsibility to make up that money for the nonprofits, and so just to say, "Don't accept money anymore from somebody who we don't like, we don't agree with," I think we need to be careful a little bit with that, and I don't think it necessarily reflects that we don't care about what's going on with the utility. We'll make that statement up here, but as far as killing the messenger and killing the people that are working for a company that we don't agree with, I think, you know, those are people in our neighborhoods. I kind of tread a little lighter on that area, and I would want to put my focus on the corporation and the people who are leading that, and if you want to send a strong message, bring that resolution forward, and then you and myself and everybody else in the community that feels strongly about we're going to have to come together, and we might have to tax ourselves again. You know, that's not a very popular word in our community. We can't even get additional police officers. We can't even pave our streets. We can't take care of a lot of the needs we have, but now we're going to be talking about spending a lot of money, but if we're all on board, then I assume the community is too, and they'll be our partners in terms of making this thing become. be our partners in terms of making this thing become a reality. So I don't really want to talk anymore about it tonight. We are going to talk about Five and Six a little later, and I, just for your information, there will be no public hearing, because the public hearing was done in May, and tonight is just going to be, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve in a second for whether we landmark or whether we don't, and then we're going to discuss it, and we'll see what direction that goes, but there will be no public testimony with that tonight, so just want to make that clear. So that concludes council comments, and let's move on. So Madam Clerk, let's review the agenda.